Here. Mr. Gaudtree.
Here.
Mrs. Fano.
Here.
Dr. Rodrak. Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rappaport. Ms. Zuckerman.
Here.
Mr. Palma.
Here.
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Lights, please. Please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on February 5, 2022. Thank you very much. Section F, Presentation of Board and District Goals for 2023. Dr. Gorman, 2223.
All right, so we'll start with the board goals. I just, if you have them before you, you've seen them before in your different weekly packets. There have been no changes in the past week or two, but based on all the feedback from all of you from the past board meetings, and we put them all together. So each one has an action plan, personnel that are being responsible for this, resources, timelines, and metrics. So the first board goal was the board will work together with the new superintendent to provide for a successful leadership transition. Number two, the board will continue to support one another in maintaining a culture of respect and by further enhancing our skills through training. And the third one, the board will deepen the understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent so the board can most effectively perform its insight and accountability roles. Just wanted to run that by you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that right now? All right, excellent. Then we'll move on to the district goals. There's five of them. And all this information will be provided on the website once it's, everything's been approved. So again, same action plan, personnel, resources, and metrics. District goal number one, the district will implement, enhance, and evaluate ways to address mental health issues as necessary. Number two, the district will monitor the completion of the current construction projects, evaluate the district's facilities, and update the long-range facility plan. Number three, the district will examine and evaluate learning acceleration opportunities for all students. Four, the district will evaluate the safety and security protocols of the district. Number five, the district will monitor the enrollment projections and evaluate the demographic study to possibly update the long-range enrollment plan. So that is the district goals. Any questions or comments on that right now?
And do you want to send them out? Thank you very much for that.
Absolutely. I want to do some more. So just real quick, my opening remarks before we get to the presentation by Ms. Woodring. I continue to have my meetings with Board of Ed trustees, the community members and administrators. I've also met with the police. We've had several meetings with them already to continue our discussions about school safety. I've also been given building tours and updates to the school maintenance and construction projects, and we are in good shape and we're going to be ready for the opening in September. As many of you saw already coming into the high school, you saw that the athletic field, the new turf was laid down. We're on schedule with that, and we'll be ready for the opening games. Chartwells is going to be our new service provider for foods, and we had a food tasting and presentation the other day. Administrators and different PTC parents were there. Everyone was very pleased and impressed. Chartwells is looking at serving smoothies, giving many more food options for students, serving locally raised food, and allowing parents to preorder meals. It will all be about quality and choice. And last, with COVID, Governor Murphy just rescinded his Executive Order 253, which required faculty and staff to undergo weekly testing if they were unvaccinated. So that's been rescinded. We will no longer be doing that as of September 1st. We will also not be requiring the test of state policy for students who are close contacts. There will be no virtual school option offered for students this year. And if a student comes down with COVID, they will be required to remain home for five days, and then they'll be able to come back, and we'll be updating exactly how that looks if they have to wear a mask or if they could test to come back after that. We're also meeting with the Health Department later this week. We're also waiting for further guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health, and we'll be confirming our, this year's protocols, and we'll be sharing them out with the parents and the board when we get all that. And that's my opening remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. Presentation of the curriculum update. Would you like to introduce Andrea?
Yes, Ms. Woodring is going to do the update on the health curriculum. And, and I think there's one other, and Woods, you'll just talk about that in general, right? That we updated it.
We're gonna do that. Okay. Let's just see. So this is a follow-up presentation to one that I did in April on the health and physical education standards that were changed by the State Board of Education. At that time, the district had not moved forward with actually revising the district curriculum. We have since done that, and so this is a follow-up to it. The first thing that I want to share with you is just some things that everybody should know about the standards, and then how that's different from the curriculum, and then how that's even different from the lesson plans. The New Jersey, the New Jersey Student Learning Standards are adopted by the State Board of Education, and it is in consultation and at the recommendation of the Commissioner of Education. Once they are adopted and approved by the State Board of Education, those standards are distributed to every district in New Jersey with certain guidelines of by which time they need to be implemented. So these have been actually pushed out an additional year because of COVID. This process happens about every five years. The curriculum is done at the district level. So district boards of education shall ensure that the curriculum and instruction are designed and delivered in such a way that all students are able to demonstrate the knowledge and skills specified by the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. The department sends out the standards, and they also usually send out supporting materials via their website that are suggestions of activities and strategies that districts can use in the development of their local curricula. That is what we have been doing this summer. In our district, teacher supervisors and myself get together, we revise and edit the curricula, we align it to the new standards. Most of the time, it is not a complete rewrite, and this one was not either. There was a lot of information in the old curricula based on the old standards that was still transferable to the new one. We do have a district curriculum template, and it is developed and in the spirit of understanding by design, which is a very popular framework to use. Once that's completed, then I present it to the Curriculum Instruction and Technology Committee of the Board of Education, and then they discuss it, we talk through it, and when they're comfortable with it, then we have consent to put it on the board agenda for full board approval. We also always make sure that the links to the draft curricula are available for the public so that they can peruse them as well. Once the board approves the curriculum, it is placed on our district website, and it's also shared out with all the supervisors and principals, and they share it out at grade-level meetings at the elementary level and in department meetings at the middle school and the high school. Teachers are responsible for creating the lesson plans. So what exactly will be happening in the classrooms and how the teachers take the objectives and the standards and turn them into lesson plans is at the discretion of the teacher. However, they do have oversight when they're doing this. And this is something that teachers are trained to do. Teachers need to make sure that they modify the lessons, and they're making decisions regarding the students that they have in their classroom because the lesson needs to meet the needs of the students if they're going to learn the objectives and the standards. They need to scaffold skills, they need to differentiate. All of that is included in the lesson plan template. And this is really what the students will do in the class and what they will know by the end of the lesson. Principals and supervisors check lesson plans in this district every two weeks, and they provide feedback when necessary. Teachers are required to submit the lessons via our Genesis Lesson Planner, and the district template offers those areas, objectives, activities, differentiation, any assessments that go along with it, any assignments that are connected to it, and then they link it to the standards as well. Teachers' formal evaluations include feedback on their planning and preparation. So there is definitely oversight, and the supervisors, principals, administrators in the buildings do know on daily basis an overview of what the teachers are doing. And we do have a standard curriculum evaluation instrument that we use. The Comprehensive Health and Physical Education Standards, if you go to the website, there's a link on the bottom, you'll see that the mission of this is all students will acquire the knowledge and skills of what is most essential to become individuals who possess health and physical literacy and pursue a life of wellness by developing the habits necessary to live healthy, productive lives that positively impact their families, schools, and communities. One of the major changes to the Comprehensive Health and Physical Education Standards are how they've classified different areas within health, wellness, and movement and activity. So there, and they are still by the end of, and there's four categorized grade bands, grades, by the end of grade two, by the end of grade five, by the end of grade eight, and by the end of grade 12. And that gives districts the discretion to place certain standards in certain areas based on the maturity of the children within that grade band. So the elephant in the room throughout all of this and all the talk on, in the news and on social media has been how the state has revised the social and sexual health standards. So here is an example by the end of grade two. The core idea, which is technically like the enduring understanding, is every individual has unique skills and qualities, which can include the activities they enjoy, such as how they may dress, their mannerisms, the things they like to do. And then there's performance expectations, and that number and letters all mean something. And if you want to go to the website, they'll explain it to you in detail. But basically, the two indicator, the two expectations that go with that core idea by the end of grade two is discuss how individuals make their own choices about how to express themselves, and the second, discuss the range of ways people express their gender and how gender role stereotypes may limit behavior. So this is a sample, or if you looked at our curriculum template, this will look slightly familiar. I made it much bigger so you could see it. And we have the unit of study, and that's Social and Sexual Health. And for grade two, it's a total of five weeks, but I want to caution you, it's not every day. If they get five lessons out of it, that might be a lot because remember that health and physical education are requirements, and you have to meet a certain minimum minutes requirement per week for both. So how we interpreted this in our curriculum, I am special, and then growing and changing. And you can read some of the things that are directly related to the standards that we're doing. What would it look like in the classroom? So I want to just let everybody know that this is not an official lesson plan from any teacher. This is one that was put together just to show the public and the board what it could look like based on what is written in our curriculum. So the goal is to expand students' perception of activities and possibilities for all students, to examine gender roles and recognize gender stereotyping, to provide students with the opportunity to share some of their identities, talents, and differences. And then we have the objectives. Students will participate in activities that examine gender stereotyping. Students will learn the impact of gender stereotypes, and students will share their unique qualities, characteristics, interests, and talents. And then, like I said, the standards are always attached to that. So as an activity, a warm-up or a do-now, it's called different things. The teacher would write the word gender stereotype on the whiteboard and ask the children what stereotype might mean. And they might prompt them depending on their responses or lack of responses that they might get. But the core idea is the teacher would make sure that the students understand that a stereotype is a way to think about a group of people that may be positive or negative and not always true. And then they would let the students know that a gender stereotype is a message, that there's a certain way you have to be if you're a boy or a girl. An example, all girls like dolls, all boys like to play sports. And then they would maybe write this example on the board and say, is this true all the time? And then the students would be asked to share some other stereotypes that they might see in television, in movies, and in books. As part of, the next part of that after the warm-up would be the discussion where the teacher might put a heading on the board, what kinds of things do you like to do? And then the students would share ideas in general, and then they would all be given, you know, a sticky note or whatever it is that the teacher uses for them to draw and write the name of something they enjoy doing. And then each child gets to place their sticky note on the chart paper or the whiteboard, and then the teacher reads each item on every sticky note, and the kids can also respond what they do like to do, what they don't like to do, and what they would say are boy things, girl things. In a stereotypical way. But then the teacher would follow up with, well, who in this class likes to do that? Probably, you'll find that a lot of children like things that are outside those stereotypical roles that they see in, sometimes in the media and movies and what they hear people talk about. The whole thing is, and the point that the teacher would be making, is that children in the class enjoy doing a lot of the same activities regardless of their gender, and it's exciting that kids can do so many things. And you might have some activities where there's not that many children that like doing them, and that's also a cause for celebration because that's what makes us individuals and makes us have our own identities. Which is the next part of the lesson where, you know, we talk about identity and how you don't always, it's basically you can't judge a book by the cover. So you ask the children, you know, someone who looks like me might not know that my family is Jewish, Hindu, Catholic, Muslim. So the teacher can obviously give them some examples at first to get them kind of understanding what the goal of it is, and then the children would be able to share. And then as a closure, once, the whole point is that it doesn't matter what you like to do or who you are, and all those things that make up you make you special, and that's important, and that nobody in the class should feel excluded. And so you would ask if you thought one of your classmates was, or how would you make this class so inclusive so that everybody feels that they're a part of it? And then you can do a, an assignment, some differentiation, and then I have like a sample assessment that's part of one of the units in there. As I said, it's just a sample, but it's kind of what would happen in a classroom to talk about that gender stereotyping and children's identities. So final thoughts. At the elementary level, the PE health teachers along with the nurses, supervisors, and myself will meet during the fall to collaborate on the writing of the individual lesson plans to ensure uniformity, especially among all five elementary schools. At the middle school and high school, they have department meetings, and they will have opportunities to meet and brainstorm and write lesson plans together. Health is not a class that meets every week at the elementary level. It's integrated into the 150 minutes per week of PE health. So it's a very small amount of time in the overall curricula that we must deliver to students on a daily basis. So the average time spent on any one health standard at grades K to 5 is less than three days per year. And in grades 6 through 12, health is one marking period, and in that one marking period, at the middle school, they must go over 53 health standards, and at the high school level, they need to go through 62 health standards. So the level of depth is not significant if you look at it time-wise and the amount of material that they must cover. Are there any questions?
Any questions we'll take from board members first, please? Have any questions of any board members at this time? I noticed that there's more in your presentation. Is that just informational, Andrew?
Yes, so everything that's in the appendix was part of the April presentation. I just put it in there because if we post it on the website for the public, they'll have, and they missed the last one, they'll have it readily available for them.
Any questions from board members? And then I'll open it up to the public on this item. Any questions from board members?
I do, Charlie. Just one quick question for Andrea. Thank you, Andrea. So for those students who have IEPs, how, and that are integrated within the classroom with our typical students, how, who develops those lesson plans for those students? So if it's in-class support or an inclusion class, it is the two teachers that teach that class. But in health and PE, usually there's only one teacher, so it would be the health and PE teacher who would do that.
Okay. Anything else from board members? Okay, anybody in the public would like to speak on this item at this time? Just tell who you are, young man. Oh, two, Taylor John Robb. Oden, actually. My first question is, what is the penalty to the district if the standard is not implemented? And how does the state oversee that process?
I'll start. We have a responsibility to follow state mandates and laws. Is this same as what I went with the masks the last two years? We were given mandates, Dr. Gorman mentioned, younger who required to wear a mask or the teachers, and they had to do it. Some people went through from our school system because they didn't want to do that. They sent their kids elsewhere. But we are obligated to do this. If we decide that we do not want to do this, then we're violating the law. Okay? And I don't think, we take an hold of that. Okay? So I'll be able to, with the attorney or the superintendent, I might have a little or a case you have, if you will, but we cannot violate standards or laws just to say because we don't like them. That's why I think the administration's done a fine job in outlining the way this curriculum is going to be taught. I think Andrea gave a nice overview. Last part of it, which she didn't do, is also an opportunity for kids to be pulled out by their parents if they're so inclined for those areas. I can't answer it any other way.
That was good. And, you know, just as short, there's two penalties. One is, you know, our licenses are on the line, so the state could go after us that way, and also there could be financial penalties for the district. So the state could come in, sanction us, and then withhold millions of dollars plus. The person, the lawyer.
You've got two, and I can add one. Potentially, the state could come in and take over the operation of the school district. That's extreme, but if you're not following the state's standards, that's absolutely the action that you can take. And they can take over different parts. They could take over the administration, they could take over the financial operations, or they can take over the whole district.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind, I don't know if you guys have questions. Many people have a couple of thoughts. I really liked your presentation, first of all, Andrea, and I really liked the slide showing, you know, standards, curriculum, lesson plans. I think there's a fourth level in, which is how those lesson plans are actually implemented in the classroom, and that's what kind of scares me is a parent of two kids going in second grade. I'm not saying I'm scared, but it worries me that there's going to be a lot of latitude given, and I don't know what certain teachers will take the lesson plans and kind of run with it in the classroom.
This is, this is concerning a lot of people, not just us, but yeah. But I have confidence the administration and principals will be able to follow through with the lesson plan and make sure we have it. We leave the rules a little because this is an important topic and we're answering questions at this point, but basically we have confidence it'll be done. It's almost like playing football. You assume everyone's going to do their job on the offensive line, so your quarterbacks can now get killed. If they don't do it, they get killed.
You're correct. We do understand the concerns that are out there in the public, and we, you know, the teachers put the lesson plans together, the supervisors as well, the principals check those lesson plans and make sure they get carried out. We pop into the classrooms a lot. We do walkthroughs, and we're seeing what's going on. And, you know, I have full confidence in the staff, you know, all the, you know, different administrators and different educators I've worked with. People don't go rogue, you know, and try to do things like that. They're trying to do the best they can, and they're going to be following the standards, as well as the plans that they put in place.
And I would encourage you, if you have questions when it gets to that point, see your building principal. That's what they're there for. And they'll be able to help you, or if they can answer, they'll direct you to the administration simple office. Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, Lawrence Connor.
John, I think, oh. John, I think the analogy that President Grau gave was a good one, okay? We depend, we are just trustees. We depend on an administration. We have competence in administration. And I have that experience with, as you know, in the district, that we were supervised. Lesson plans were checked every week. Observations take place in the classroom, and this is why we have an administrative and supervisory staff, okay? Coaches, be it assistant coaches, as we would use in the analogy, and they make sure that everybody does their job, and there are consequences when people don't do their job. So I think that's a simple answer, okay? I think that analogy was well put.
Thank you, Mike. All right, John? Anybody else? Thank you.
My name is John Preory. I live at 98 Jesse Court in Montville. I'm a grandpa. And just to follow up with John. And just to follow up what John said, especially in a scenario, the supervisory capacity probably should be at least significantly increased, you know, on an issue such as this. And that's my simple input on it. I think we need it to contribute to the competence of our parents, grandparents.
And the elder concerned, and that was told to us in committee meetings, and by the superintendents indicated supervision will apply. And if there's a question, please call the principal at any time or the principal office. Us grandfathers got to stick together.
Amen.
Thank you. There's nothing else at this time in this topic for the board? The one to the, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, you're way in the back.
Yeah, sorry, I got that. John Fazio, Southern Walnut, Conroe. I did want to ask, we, so we had one example, grade two, and I'm not as well-read in this topic as I'd like to be, just kind of been busy over the summer. But is it possible to have more examples from some of the older grades? Because I know there's a lot of controversial material supposedly in the curriculum, and it would be nice to see, you know, how those controversial areas are really being addressed with examples, instead of just a generic grade two, which is fairly benign, my eyes.
So as I mentioned, lesson plans are really a function of the teachers, and I don't want to, and I don't think it's right to take that away. The teachers will be meeting, they'll be working together to put together the lesson plans if at that time they want to share those with their supervisor, with me. But the curriculum under the learning activities does clearly delineate a lot of the topics, and basically starts with an objective that would be then taken and expanded into a lesson plan. So if you read through the curricula that will be posted once the Board of Education approves it, I think you'll see a lot of what will be taught to the students. I also want to let everybody know, it's part of the appendix, that the board does have a policy that if you're not comfortable with the sexual health, the family life component of the health curriculum, that a parent can write a letter to the principal asking for an alternative assignment and a setting for their child during that time.
I'm just surprised that the board hasn't gone a more thorough walkthrough, maybe you have, and I just haven't seen it, of those areas that are controversial, and that, you know, some parents might take offense to, you know, in the setting.
Yeah, well, go ahead.
I'll be happy, I mean, I spoke to a parent today at length about this. I think she felt very comfortable at the end of our conversation, so I welcome anybody to give me a call, and I can walk you through some of the things and give you more of an overview of what it might look like, or how we've done it in the past. A lot of the middle school, high school curricula is similar to what it was. It's not a huge, huge change from the things that we were already incorporating into our health curriculum over the last 10 years.
Okay, I mean, so, on the curriculum committee, we did express, sorry, on the curriculum committee, we did express the need that the teachers and the supervisors and the people designing the curriculum really remembered, I guess, the needs of the community, okay? We wanted them to understand that we do have to keep the sensitivities of the community in mind. So when we were looking at the curriculum, we were going through all of the potential resources that could be used. We were looking for things that might be objectionable, things that might cause controversy. And I got to tell you, there's really nothing in there that goes beyond something reasonable. It's all grade level appropriate, age-appropriate material. It's really done with a lot of thought and sensitivity to the needs of the community. So I think there, that's why everyone is saying we have confidence in our administration, because they've done their due diligence. And I think they've done a very good job of this, and I think there really won't be anything that the overwhelming majority of people won't find just perfectly acceptable.
I think I'll find it acceptable.
But you have a problem? Talk to Andrea.
Just not only the curriculum committee, but some of us have the, gone through the 70 pages or so of standards and practices and so on, okay? It's a laborious job, but I really didn't see things that really were objectionable. It's, this was a product of professional work with the good of the community in mind. And I think that there's a lot of standards in there and outcomes that students need at appropriate ages, okay? I don't know that they're getting all the information from the family that they got in prior times, okay? I just wanted to say also that this is an evolutionary process. This is a new thing, okay? And the people that work together are the teachers. Teaching is a collaborative process. Teachers share information. What is the best way to do this? And what, how are you teaching this? And what do you do in this case? And that's a faculty room type of thing, okay, this cooperation. And I think to put your, to allay your fears, and I think a lot of people have fears, I think we have professional people, other than the supervisors and the administration, that will approach this in a collaborative, best way for the students. The teachers learn from other teachers, how to prepare and how to do these things, okay? And that is really a mark of a good school system. And we have a premier school system with people who can do that.
Thank you, Mike. All right, you've got a lot of answers, and if you have a question, feel free to contact Andrea.
Yeah, just one last closing statement. I just think, you know, I hope all of you have thoroughly done the reading that Michael has done, you know, 70 pages or whatever it is, before you vote on this. And, yeah, I look forward to Andrea maybe getting some more detail, you know, hopefully you can share slides or, you know, the detail behind some of this, and take a beat at it. Thank you.
I just had, I got to say one more thing. John Petrosina, I wanted to get that down. The opt-out option, while it seems like a nice, you know, option for people who want to take that route, you know, I'm thinking about it here as a parent, and would I do it? Yeah, I would probably do it, but then my kid would be ostracized, potentially. He's the only kid in the class, or one of the only few kids in the class, that's now got this alternate assignment. It's not really a real option, so I probably would not do it. And I just don't think that that's a good enough way to appease a lot of the public that feel that way. Thank you for your comment. Thank you. All right, since no other, we'll move on to business administrators. Please report.
I just wanted to update the board on the status of the various projects that are going on throughout the district related to construction, starting with the high school. We are well on our way for the turf and the track in completion for the start of school. If you have been out there, you will notice that the new carpet has been laid on the track. They are doing the installation right now. And next week, we will begin to start the work of, on the track, to put the rubber surface on. So we have made great progress on that particular project. At Robert R. Lazar, we are expanding the entranceway to include an access control vestibule. That work is also proceeding. They have removed the old roof and have begun the process next week, put up the steel and the enclosure. That project will be delayed into September due to supply chain issues related to the ability to get glass. But we are in the process of getting the signage up on that building, and if you have driven by, you'll have noticed that we have done a lot of painting in that, on that particular facade. In the case of Valley View School, we have done a new entranceway that provides some outdoor classroom space. That project is moving and should be complete for the start of school. Most of the cement work has already been completed, and the signage will end up arriving in September. Additionally, at Valley View, we're doing a unit replacement of the unit ventilators, and that is in works. Right now, we're doing brickwork in order to adjust the intake panels that are on the sides of the buildings to allow the air to come in. And then finally, at the sister schools, Cedar Hill, William Mason, and Woodmont, we are replacing the exterior panels on the gyms and installing new windows in the gyms, and those projects are underway. So I wanted to just provide you with an update. Definitely have the meeting in September. I'll get you pictures so you can see how all that progress has occurred.
Thank you very much, Katine. Let's go to committee reports at this point. Finance and Facilities, Karen.
Thank you, Charlie. The Finance and Facilities Committee met just prior to tonight's meeting, and we did go over the construction projects as Katine has outlined for you this evening. We also began an early discussion of any future construction projects. We had a discussion on the new Chartwell's food service, and it seems as though this is a company that the high school and middle school students will enjoy a great deal, and it's likely that some of the elementary schools will also be using that service. There's a new initiative of website update and communication, and it will probably take us through the whole year in order to hire or contract with a new platform. So look for that going forward. And our next meeting is in September, prior to the next board meeting.
Thank you, Katine. All right. Personnel, Dave?
Oh, I don't know. I guess we've been doing a few things, right, Andrea? Yeah, so we did have a meeting last week. We discussed the new health standards extensively, as you've heard tonight. We did also discuss a few other curriculum, and that was the majority of the work that we did. And the good news, oh, one of the good news pieces coming out of that is that we actually have a lot of kids signing up for advanced math. So we look forward to being able to track some kids to higher levels of math than what we used to have. What was it, what was that? Calculus, what kind of calculus is that? Multi-variable calculus now at the high school to accommodate a few students who have just been accelerating through their math studies, and it looks like the class is gaining some momentum, so that's a good thing, a happy day. Yeah.
Michael Brian, policy?
Michael Brian's policy.
Yeah. The whole my report doesn't compare to that, but we, at our most recent policy meeting, we updated some policies that are mandated by the state, needed updating. And as far as personnel, I think we'll have a heck of a lot of well-qualified personnel when we start the school on the 6th, okay, to meet the needs of our students.
Thank you, Mike. Communications, Michelle.
I'll just provide a little bit more detail to what Karen started to say about the website review. Dr. Gorman formed a website review committee in conjunction with Sue Marinella, our District Communications Officer, and it's just a district and community representatives for a variety of website needs. The committee is taking a survey to help identify website strengths and improvement areas, provide questions and insights to the district's website needs. One of the things, because our current website provider is, will no longer exist, there's one company that they recommended, we move forward to, but we're actually going to be reviewing four different possible providers, and having meetings and evaluating them extensively to see what the best path forward for us is. And, you know, the expectation would be to do that through the course of this year, and go live with a new website into the next full year.
Thank you, Michelle. Mr. Grant, report isn't here, there's no way at half committee. Liaisons, Karen?
There's not much to report from New Jersey School Boards, but I will just remind board members to sign up for workshop in October. The Legislative Committee will meet on September 17th. We're fortunate to have an invited guest, Assembly Speaker Craig Parkland will be joining the committee to take questions. The new executive director, Tim Purnell, who's a native son of Montville, is meeting individually with officers and will hold the first quarterly officers' meeting on October 17th.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. O'Brien, Morris County? No report. Joe, we have Educational Services and Drug Awareness.
Looking to report, had a meeting last, when you say I wasn't able to attend, and nothing on the drug awareness thing either.
Thank you, Joe. Liaisons, I don't know if anybody's met, Cedar Hill, Karen?
Sorry, I'm sorry, Charlie. Norwood.
Hilldale, no report. Valley View, Joe?
No report this time.
Katine, Mason?
No, report.
Rama, Woodmont?
No report.
Anything from Lazar, the high school?
I do have something for the high school. Even though we haven't met, the high school PTC has partnered with the Montville Athletic Boosters for an all-new pink apparel fundraiser, which we launched this week. Sales, you can go to actually the high school PTC website or the Montville Athletic Boosters website. It's special pink Montville spirit apparel. There's t-shirts, long sleeve t-shirts and hoodies. You have to purchase by September 14th. A portion of the proceeds will go towards breast cancer research, and then a portion will go towards the two organizations. But if you purchase by September 14th, you'll have your apparel in time for the October 14th Pink Out Football Game. So please look on the PTC website or the Boosters website and help support that.
I'm sure you can send us something to the brass.
I can send you all the details directly, that's for.
On the Booster website. Charlie, I, Charlie, I can get the Athletic Boosters? I'm sorry, I just got the Michael. Unfortunately, they're meeting in September, but unfortunately, I will be overseas at that time if someone wants to represent me at the meeting. What's the date, Mike? The first Wednesday, okay? Might be the second Wednesday because of the holiday, all right? So I will be back in time to be the voice that must. That says the 7th of the 13th. 14th. I'll try and make it. And Charlie, can you let me know if there's anything?
Yeah, Charlie, real quick, also, well, first of all, there's nothing from Lazar, but the Montville Education Foundation is getting back and starting to get active again. They need lots of volunteers for their raffle. They do a valuable service to the schools by providing grants to the teachers, and I know they've spoken with Dr. Gorman already about this. So if anyone out there wants to get involved and help out the schools, you don't have to be a parent, although it's nice, but you don't have to be, but please look them up.
Do you want to take this, Dave?
Yes, I will go ahead and sell tickets.
I'd rather buy a ticket for you, because I've been buying one for years from Mr. Rama, and I have never won anything. So I'm going to buy from you.
That's because you're buying it from him, not his wife. You're buying it from my wife.
I'll sell them.
Yes, I will sell you a ticket. I will sell all of you a ticket. Thank you. It's a worthy cause.
Anything else? Other participation, opportunity to ask any questions on the agenda? Anybody have any questions on agenda items? Do you?
We do have one addendum as L 72, appointment of an English teacher, Jennifer Nichols. So do I have a motion on the consent resolution of including the addendum, please?
Second.
Any questions on that again on the agenda? Okay, do we have a roll call, please? What's this? We, do you have a question on?
I had a question on, I don't know if this is the right section, it's K 5.
What is it?
K 5, the revised contracts.
When did it come up sooner? Have you got a, is it A 5?
K. Section K 5 on their revised contract, and then number nine, solar power?
Landscaping company.
Yeah, $200,000 for, it looks like for solar power. Just curious, I'll give you a second to look at it.
I'm trying to figure out where you talk.
It's a $200,000.
Oh, okay.
Charge for solar power. I'm just curious if, a little, did you ever get some details on that? And if, you know, anyone's done a cost-benefit analysis on it, you know, how long they last, how much they cost, how much benefit the town gets and the school gets from, you know, having those.
The revision to the solar panel, or solar landscape, is, relates not to the installation of panels. That's already occurred. It relates to the agreement that we made with them. So what happened when they installed the panels on six of the schools, the agreement was that they did it for free, and that what they would do is they would then take a portion of the power that was created from those solar panels, and they would be paid back over the course of the life of those panels, which is 15 years. And so the expectation, those panels are actually only partially, we've only had them active for about four months. So part of the reason you're seeing that jump is because in the previous period, we didn't have a full year of panels. The amount that you're seeing revised is as we project out a full year of panels. And the analysis that we've done very preliminarily, because again, we haven't had a full year, shows that our savings is outweighing the amount that we are paying as part of the agreement. We will continue to monitor that and actually expand that as we have a full year under our bill, and, but as of right now, in our quick analysis, we actually have made money off of that process instead of losing.
Okay. Good news, thank you. All right, let's continue. Any questions on any agenda items? Do we have a motion in the second, Mr. Slump? According to the addendum, we have all the motion in the second.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Modak?
Yes.
Dr. Cortolino?
Yes.
Mr. Doltry?
Yes, abstain on K 1, check number 3511.
Mrs. Phantom?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Close session, I don't think we need a close session tonight. Old business, section Q on the old business of the board. General board comment on new business? Next board meeting will be September 13th, ugly, at this same location. Okay? Public participation is an opportunity for the public to ask any questions of things that are not on the agenda, what they would be interested in asking, please say come forward if you'd like to speak. Hold that up, call you.
Flip the switch up. Probably, as an old coach, I probably wouldn't need my mic, but I'll certainly use it. Just wanted to point out a couple of things. Just from walking around the nice soft ground with my arthritic knees, I'm a retired physical therapist after about 47 years, so I enjoy the soft turf on the knees. Just a minor point, on the dugouts for the ladies, on the softball area, just a covering for, over their dugout area, would be a nice complement for inclement weather, as well as sun when they play. I noticed that on the other side, the boys, they're covered and they're protected, and on the other side where the softball field is, they're not. A minor point, but at least something to cover, especially in inclement weather. Another topic that I was involved with as a physical therapist was CTE. Probably most of you know, it represents chronic encephalopathy, traumatic encephalopathy that is. And there are, I watched a seven-on-seven scrimmage that was held here a couple of weeks ago, many high schools attended, and quite a few of the teams had these soft padded, head, soft headgear elements above the normal helmet.
Element.
Element. Which, studies have shown mitigates the amount of trauma that sustained on blows. These run approximately $55 to $60 per helmet, and I'm sure all of us would like to hold down any incidents and opportunities for CT to develop on our children. So just a little commercial about these headgear, and you could look it up online to see where they are. But I was surprised, many high schools already are using them, just to practice, not on the games, but in practice, to avoid some of the extra head blows and head trauma. So that's another point. And this last point, I wrote, because I wanted to make sure I got my point out correctly. And I did share this with Chief Cagiano a couple of weeks ago, and I said he was gonna share it with Dr. Gorman, with regards to maybe helping on a volunteer basis the security of our school environments, especially outside. As we know, the school year is coming upon us quickly, and I'd like to offer grassroots initiative to enhance the security of our schools campuses. Possibly through the PTAs of our schools, we can create a volunteer group that will be available to just monitor our campuses for any suspicious activity. Areas outside the school buildings, when in session, can have two to three people per grade, per grade school and middle school, and at the high school, maybe three to four people, assigned to just be on watch, and possibly have a dedicated line that would connect them to our police department to report any unusual activity. I certainly, as a retiree and veteran, would be willing to donate a few days per month, as I'm sure many other retirees and parents would do. This might be an out-of-the-box concept, but anything that would help prevent a disaster should be put on the table at this unfortunate, chaotic time in our country's history. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Florida BFW there?
No, I wasn't far from it. I trained at Fort Knox, papers from there.
Thank you. He has some points on June, registration's taken him down. Anybody else? I don't entertain a motion to adjourn at this point.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for coming, ladies.